Good evening. I'm gonna just stay here and do this. My name is Anita Murphy. I am joined today by the Director of Education Policy for the Rockefeller Institute, Brian Backstrom, and Lisa Partial, distinguished professor, right, Lisa?
Yes.
Distinguished Professor of Political Science at Damon University and Rockefeller Institute Fellow. I previously served as the District Superintendent at Capitol Region BOCs. I have filed at retirement since. Just a couple of housekeeping notes. The hearing, this hearing is recorded, and it will be posted after, shortly, on the Rockefeller Institute website. And some audience members will be recognizable in the footage by saying you're consenting to potentially be on camera. And then, although we do not have simultaneous interpreter services, we do have an ASL interpreter here with us tonight, who is sitting right next to me on the stage. If you have any questions about the Foundation Aid Study after this hearing, or you're in need of assistance with anything today, please talk to any one of our event staff members who are wearing badges and they're all through the room. And before we begin, I'm gonna ask everybody if they would please silence their cell phones. We want the panel to be able to hear what you all have to say and give everybody the time that they deserve to say what's on their mind. On behalf of the Rockefeller Institute, we'd also like to extend a sincere thank you to the principal here at North Park Community School, Carla Graves, and her staff, who have been very, very helpful in planning this. I know it seems like it's not a lot, but people have been at this for weeks and weeks and weeks. Just some background and context. The purpose of these is to hear the voices of the community on the Foundation Aid Formula and for state education funding. This year, in the 2024-25 in the budget, the Rockefeller Institute was commissioned to conduct a study to assess the state's Foundation Aid Formula funding and discuss political modification, or potential modifications to how the formula works. As a part of the study, the researchers at the Rockefeller Institute are collecting feedback from the public and education stakeholders, both through online submission and written comment, and through in-person verbal testimony, as we will be hearing tonight. The hearing is the second of five public forums being held this summer in different regions of the state to solicit feedback from the education community on Foundation Aid Formula. Tonight, we will be hearing from members of the public, you all, who will share your verbal comments on the Foundation Aid Formula and potential changes. Feedback from both this afternoon's portion and tonight's portion will be incorporated into the Foundation Aid Formula study and will be used to inform the institute's final report and discussions of policy options. Just one quick thing before I hand it over to Brian. If you would like to, after you speak, or even if you don't speak, please note you can always give written testimony on the Rockefeller website, and Brian's gonna put that up. And folks at the Rockefeller Institute very much value the input, so I appreciate that. Brian?
Thanks very much, and thanks to each of you individually, collectively. Every one of you is taking time out of your day to give us information that we need. We look at it all, we hear it all, we digest it all. And this is part of the process that we've decided to undertake, is as broad outreach and comprehensive touches to as many stakeholders as we can think of. Bob Magna is the President of the Rockefeller Institute, and I convey his sincerest apologies for not being here. He has an injury that he, at six o'clock this morning, informed us that he couldn't make it out to be with us today. So I am doing these introductory comments in his stead. As you may know, the New York State Constitution enshrines in it everybody's right to a sound, basic education. And back in 2007 was the implementation of the state's Foundation Aid Formula. It provides about 70% of the state's aid to education to districts. The development of the formula and its implementation was a long time in coming, a long time in being implemented. There were highs and lows. It started out messy, and it stayed messy. And as Anita said, we got a call at the Rockefeller Institute at the end of budget negotiations, state budget negotiations this year, asking us to do some analysis of the formula and see if there are ways that we could update it, reform it, revise it, and quite frankly, make it more understandable. So that's part of what we're trying to do. Let me just run through a couple of introductory slides here. First, understand that we do have more public hearings coming on. We're trying to hear from as many people as possible. If you look at that URL at the bottom, I urge everybody to go to that short, sweet, rockinst.org/FA, and that'll give you everything you need to know about our future public hearings. There's forms there where you can either submit comments or upload pre-written comments, and explains what we're really trying to do here. We just started this process. We have more than 120 submitted written testimonies. We've started reading them all, and we will get to them and through all of them. It's also, we've done a little bit more on the outreach as well. We've sent out notices to the administrators in every single school district in the state. We've sent out notices to every single member of the State Assembly, every single member of the State Senate. We've partnered with the State Education Department and used their distribution list to announce all of these opportunities for input. And this really is for one goal that we believe in very sincerely, is that we want to talk to as many people who know as much about any aspect of this formula as possible. We have a very limited timeframe, so we're decided to forego sleep. But I think that it's been a very encouraging process. Not confrontational, but really quite collaborative. And it's wonderful to be able to have the opportunity to hear what you guys know. So thank you again for coming to these. This is the timeline that we're operating under. End of the budget negotiation started, the clock, we set up, we were tasked to set up three public hearings. We decided to do five. And this is the second one, Farmingdale on Long Island, Lawrence outside of Cooperstown, rural district that we wanted to tap, and Gilderlin in the Albany area. We're gonna keep open the portal for the submission of written testimony even longer than that, for a few weeks after that. So on September 6th, we'll close that down. And that's largely driven by the timeline that we have to operate under by December 1. We need to deliver our thoughts and ideas and recommendations to the governor and the state leaders of the state legislature. Also, in the law, it's very clear that no one has to do anything that we say. But we think that that's kind of freeing. We're using the opportunity to look at every single one of these boxes. And if you look at this, this is put out by the State Education Department. This is their flow chart. And it summarizes what the foundation, and simplifies what the Foundation Aid Formula is. We see as our task to look at every one of those boxes, talk to stakeholders who have invested interest in every one of those boxes, and see what we can do to improve it, to make it more predictable, to make it more understandable. We think it's important that if people are getting money for education from the state, they know why, and they know what it was designed to do. I think with that, that's my introductory remarks. Just let me turn it over to my partner here at our table.
Hi, just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Lisa Partial. I am a distinguished professor of political science at Damon University here in Amherst, New York. I'm also a policy fellow at the Rockefeller Institute, where I specialize in local government, and local government reorganization and local government service delivery.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. I was remiss, I should tell you. Where anything to happen, there's an exit there, and you can go straight out the door here. Shouldn't be too hard to find those if anything were to happen. So we're gonna start with our registered speaker testimony. A couple of things before that. You're gonna have two minutes to speak. There is, I have a clock here, and there is a clock on the podium. It will change colors as soon as you're halfway through. And then, at two minutes, if you're not done, I will excuse myself right now. I'm going to interrupt you and stop you. We want everybody to have a chance to speak. Again, if you don't feel like you have said everything you want to, please provide written testimony. That's great, and would be very much appreciated. I'm gonna start by calling people up in groups of five, so y'all have your numbers on your badges. When you come up to the podium, line up on that side. Raise your hand over there. Thank you. Right there. And if you would please give us your name, and if you're from an organization, first, that would be very, very helpful to the panel. Again, please, two minutes. And just a note, please remember, this is about foundation aid and not about education policy. And so, we would very much appreciate it if people would keep their points to foundation aid and those things that are in the formula. So, great, I'm gonna start. Speakers one through five, if you would come up, and then you can just go as you are numbered. I know.
Ready? I'm Sean Van Sgoi. I'm here today to advocate for essential changes to the Foundation Aid Formula, which directly impact the Gananda Central School District. Over the last 14 years, the Governor's Office and legislators have added tiers and tweaks to the formula to move funding towards challenging political interests, such as focusing on student extraordinary needs. In doing so, they have ignored the quantitative measures of wealth and fiscal ability built into the system that factor into a district's ability to fund services to meet those needs. We are asking that you prioritize, one, per pupil property wealth, two, local tax effort, three, per pupil income wealth, and four, this combined wealth ratio. First, I'd like to address per pupil property wealth. Gananda is a planned community comprised primarily of residential housing. We have no town or village center with businesses to contribute to the tax base. Consequently, our per pupil property wealth is significantly lower than our BOCs and New York State averages. This reality limits our capacity to generate local revenue through property taxes as compared to other districts. Second, for the last 20 years, Gananda has had one of the 20 highest tax rates on true. Our residents are annually assuming a tax burden higher than 97% of the districts in New York State. We are asking for the formula to consider local effort. Third, the per pupil income wealth in Gananda is lower than our BOCs and New York State averages. This indicates that our community's aggregate adjusted gross income is insufficient to support our schools financially. Our combined wealth ratio of .54 further underscores our financial challenges. This ratio is again lower than the average for our BOCs and New York State. It's another clear indicator that Gananda is less wealthy compared to other districts and should, in theory, qualify for more state aid to balance these disparities. Again, we are asking that you prioritize per pupil property wealth, local tax effort, per pupil income wealth, and the combined wealth ratio.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Patty Grupke. I'm from Clarence Central School District. I wanted to share first and foremost, I appreciate you being here. I heard you say one thing, that we needed a formula that was predictable. I would ask that be predictable and stable, so that schools can adequately plan budgets without burdening the taxpayers. I'm in a little bit of a wealthier district, or so our formula says. But community wealth factor does not truly represent wealth or poverty in communities, since it's an average. While we have many properties in our community that have high property values, we also have families living in poverty, living in small homes, apartments, trailer parks, and motels. Possibly using a median might be a better indicator of community wealth. There is this idea that if you have a higher community wealth, you can make that up by levying more taxes. But with the tax cap, it really does negate community wealth, and it prevents districts from addressing needs without having a supermajority vote. One of the issues that came up was there was a thought of using fund balance and reserves as a factor within the formula. I'd like to encourage you to look at the impact that CARES Act has had on fund balances over the last few years, because this might provide a misleading conclusion regarding the capacity of districts. There needs to be a recognition that much of our current fund balances and reserves was built from what are now non-existing funding sources, and that many districts are using these to balance budgets right now for both academic and mental health supports for students that were put in, these positions were put in place as a result of the pandemic, but are still needed. So as we move forward, one of the other items I'd really like you to look at is inflationary increases. These fund balances are going to be needed for inflationary increases as we see the cost of business going up, the cost of salaries going up. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'm Wayne Dresscher. I'm with the, Wayne Dresscher with the Chit Dog Sloan Union Free School District. I did give out a presentation, mostly because it'll make more sense with what I'm about to say. I'm about to talk about one of the most dastardly items within the foundation formula. If I could turn you to page two, you'll see that within our district, poverty has gone up significantly, being the community eligibility, and our free and reduced-priced lunches went from 40% to well over 60%. If I could turn you to the next page, you'll see that in 2019, 2020, our free and reduced-price lunch ratio went up 1.62%. However, then, as we went community eligible within that year, the three-year average, next year, it looked like we got wealthier, because it went down 4.17, the next year, 4.58, the next year, 4.39. So while poverty was actually accelerating, it appeared that we were getting richer. And as of 2425, our ratio was 51% free and reduced-priced lunches. However, if you took that 2019-20 ratio and extrapolated that to data, to current, you would find that our ratio would be 68%. And that's being very, very conservative, because our poverty levels were actually accelerating. What that did is, in comparison to our neighboring districts, who were, in the next page, you can see was 66.2% more average per pupil. However, they received 5.3% more in the Foundation Aid per pupil. If we took those numbers, and, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the digits here, and extrapolated that going forward, we would have received over $15 million. In reality, we received only $14 million. We are a million dollars short.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark Laurie, the Superintendent of Schools in Niagara Falls. And I'm here to support the Rockefeller Center, because the timeline that Mr. Backstrom just put on the screen is impossible. In order to do something, we've always heard and learned, in order to do something right, you've gotta take your time and do it right. That compressed timeline and the testimony you're going to hear is just not possible. You are owed the respect and the ability to do the work that you have to, because it's so important. And we need to get this right this time. It's 17 years old. It uses census data from the 2000s. And you have, you're gonna get a ton of testimony. And anything worth doing is worth doing the right way. And it's such a critical thing that you're doing. It's such a good thing. But it is not just about a formula. It is about the economic driver of a community, and it's about the equalizer of disparities in communities. So my recommendation is not as detailed and deep as the formulaic things you're gonna hear. It's just that we need to recommend that you take more time. Not forever. We can't wait forever. But we've gotta take more time and do it right. The major thing I'd like to say about the formula is that it is messy, but those inputs, those boxes, have to be looked at. You've gotta take time to look at those boxes that don't include homelessness, new graduation rates, mental health, school safety, community eligibility programs, extreme poverty, artificial intelligence. These are the things that have to be somewhat incorporated. It can't be done in three months. I urge you to slow down, make that part of your recommendation. Do it once, do it right, make it less messy and very predictable. Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much. Before, come on up, no, come on up. Before you start speaking, can I have speakers six through 10 line up, please? Sorry about that, didn't mean to interrupt.
No worries. Daryl McLaughlin, I serve the Perry Central School District. I represent the regions that feed our state and remind all, New York is more than a city. The study used to derive the foundation amount is obsolete. There have been significant changes in standards, assessments, and regulations. The Board of Regents is considering new graduation measures that will redefine successful schools. Whether by statutes, regulations, or community expectations, the responsibilities placed on the schools to raise students have increased exponentially. Rural schools are expected to offer community school services without community schools' funding. There must be a thorough study of what it costs to educate a child in today's New York. Using antiquated poverty data to calculate pupil needs does not provide a true representation of the families we serve. Employing free and reduced-priced lunch percentages is increasingly problematic, given the number of districts qualifying for the community eligibility provision. The weighting of English as a new language students must increase, given the expansion of the subpopulation and those arriving with interrupted formal education. Regional cost indices have not been updated since the formula was enacted. Rural districts spend more to gain access to services for students, given they are not readily available in their districts, counties, or regions. Scarcity consumes additional resources, making it more difficult to attract and retain highly qualified talent. The impacts of aid stagnation are magnified in our communities. There must be recognition, the property tax cap did not exist at the formula's inception. Arbitrary floors and calculations provide inaccurate information on communities' abilities to generate local revenue. Computations using the combined wealth ratio must be replaced with the lesser of the pupil wealth ratio or alternate pupil wealth ratio. Any solution for education funding must have a sensible timeline for implementation and run as designed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm much shorter, so. I'm Erica Bellis-Pacer, and I'm from the Fairport School District, which is outside of Rochester. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight about Foundation Aid. As an advocate for public education across the country in my actual job, a member of the Fairboard School of Board of Education, a parent and educator, I stand before you very concerned. Foundation aid is not merely a line item in a budget. It is the bedrock upon which our schools build their programs and support our students. Imagine a building without a solid foundation, it would struggle to stand. Our schools are no different. Without stable and fully funded Foundation Aid, our ability to plan for the future, to innovate and provide the necessary resources for our students is severely compromised. We face challenges from addressing learning loss that was impacted by the pandemic, to supporting the social-emotional needs of our students that require sustained, consistent financial support. Public education is not just a privilege, it is a fundamental right and a cornerstone of our democracy. It is through education that we empower our youth to seize opportunities and contribute meaningfully to our society. Every child, regardless of their background or circumstances, deserves a quality education that provides them with a future and prepares them. However, the current approach to Foundation Aid falls short in fulfilling all these promises. The rushed timeline and insufficient analysis by state agencies threatens to perpetuate the inequitable funding systems that hamper our ability to serve all students effectively. We need funding that is fair, sustainable, and provides long-term fiscal stability. Not one that leaves us scrambling and guessing year after year and getting sick to our stomachs as we try to prepare our own budgets. The inclusion of UPK in the funding formula is also essential. Early education sets that foundation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So my name is Peter Derico, and I'm from Buffalo Creek Academy, and the treasurer, and I'm on the Board of Trustees, both non-paying roles. We're a nonprofit, free-to-the-students charter school, grades five to eight. And we're a Cambridge International Certification, which gives us two sister schools in Ghana that the students interface on a Zoom basis with and raise money for. We have a Civil Air Patrol program that was started by the Air Force 80 years ago. And we serve the low-income minority students in East Buffalo. We're 95% African-American, 4% non-white, and 1% white. My understanding of the financial aid to the Buffalo Public District specifically recognizes the necessity of additional funds for serving these most disadvantaged students. What I can say is that Buffalo Creek does not get this proportional funding. And we educate and serve this disadvantaged, low-income, and minority-targeted students. So I have a simple recommendation, and that, it's not simple, but it's in its end, but to fund charter schools directly from Foundation Aid, so that the intent of serving disadvantaged, low-income, and minority students for those charter schools that are dedicated to that activity can be done at a level that best serves those students. It's important, in my mind, I'm a big believer in public schools, but I think today, we need as many schools, quality schools, serving our students as we possibly can. And that needs to be, and that needs to be done through direct funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Bruce Fraser, and I represent no one except myself. Devising and advancing equitable approach of funding in public education will be a challenge for the Rockefeller Institute. And that challenge, it is essential that you meet it, due to the state's failure to provide students, losing two cases on a constitutional basis for failing to meet a sound, basic education requirement. I'd like to recommend to you the funding studies that Dr. Bruce Baker has done comparing the 50 state systems. And it's titled "The Adequacy and Fairness of State School Financing Systems." It looks at three qualities. Fiscal effort, the percent of gross state product utilized to support public education. Statewide adequacy, which New York does well. We're a wealthy state with well-funded schools, so it's not hard to meet the national standard, the standard cost for reaching national average test scores. Those two qualities New York does great on, comes out with number five ranking statewide in comparison to the other states. But we rank only 47 in terms of equal opportunity. I worked with Dr. Richard Sammon of Virginia Tech, a nationally recognized researcher, consultant, and very much involved in legal challenges of the state school funding system. His basic principle that he, first thing he taught us was, the higher percentage of funding for K through 12 education that comes from state sources, the more equitable you would expect that state's funding system to prove to be. that state's funding system to prove to be. Unfortunately, New York's has fallen over the last five years from over 40, almost 41% to 37.8%.
Thank you very much.
It's hard to be equitable when the state is backing off.
Thank you.
I'd also say that the Baker study indicates
Sir.
that the gross state product peaked right before 2008, 2009, with 4.7% of this gross state product.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I appreciate you taking the time to be here this evening. You got some sunshine, so. Please note the opinions here are my own. One of the biggest sources of pride of being an American is the promise we make across the nation that every child, each child, will have a free public education. We might not always agree on how to meet that mark and what that education entails, but as Americans, we come together and make this promise to our children. I'm Dr. Mary Caitlin White. I'm a parent of three, a teacher educator at SUNY Geneseo, and a member of the Fairport Central School District Board of Education. I was disheartened to attend a session with NISBA, the New York State School Board Association, earlier this month, and hear from both Mr. Backstrom and Mr. Magna about the timeframe for this study and the analysis being far too short. I have full faith that this institute is capable of completing a thoughtful analysis, but your hands seem tied by the short amount provided. This is the moment to do this analysis and to do it well. I fear the limited engagement and the time for the analysis will lead to half-hearted temporary bandages for an inherently flawed system. Additionally, I fear we will be placated for years to come by officials saying we had the chance in 2024 to change the formula. And I encourage everyone present to please write your elected officials to express that concern on this issue. In an ideal world, one where this analysis was given the time and due diligence it deserves, we would move away from a largely two-part funding-for-school system, foundation aid post-local school taxes. This system is inequitable and should be changed to reflect every child being deserved of an equitable, free public education. Additionally, the funding model will shift away from annual budgeting. It's nearly impossible to make long-term planning decisions under the current model. First, because politicians play games with our educational funding to further their political whims. And every year, we endure months of games and bickering to determine what our communities need to vote on in May. Secondly, we're always unsure what the formula compute for the following year and have no guarantee of hold harmless. We need long-term fiscal stability, not year-to-year squabbles. And finally, I would strongly encourage the consideration of UPK to be included in the formula rather than piecemeal grants and miscellaneous funding. We're at a pivotal point in education, and we have an extreme shortage of teachers, which is only predicted to get worse. We have heightened needs of students and a growing list of mandates.
Thank you so much.
Hello. Alyssa Klein and Joni Klein Shepherd on behalf of Charter Champions of Rochester. I spent 10 years leading operations for a nonprofit charter management organization in Illinois and Ohio. And those streets are crazy. But I did learn some things about how they fund schools. They direct additional resources to students who are low-income and English learners, students with disabilities, homeless students, historically underserved populations. And they direct those dollars directly to those students' schools so that those funds can support those students' education and their heightened needs. I'm going to wrap up now. Joni is. Not the policy wonk I am. Thank you.
We appreciate you and understand. Thank you. Can I have 51 to 55, please? Come on up.
Hello. My name is Naisha Hamilton. I am a community organizer here in Buffalo with Citizen Action of New York. I am an advocate for education justice and alumni of Buffalo Public Schools. But one of the greatest roles I have right now is an aunt to my nieces and my nephews who attend public schools all across New York State. But today, I'll be focusing on Buffalo Public Schools as I see and hear what they need every day, but we don't have the funds to do so. BPS students are in urgent need of restorative justice and mental health services. The trauma that they have endured just this year alone due to violence, lack of resources, cannot be adequately addressed with the current programs we have in place. I attended a school board meeting back in May where numerous students passionately appealed to the board for these essential services. And it's disheartening to have to tell students that despite their critical needs, the resources aren't simply available. The response not only fails to meet their needs, but also undermines their sense of support and security. Many of the traumas our students face are beyond what we can even fathom in our lifetimes, greatly affecting how they function in school. Our students are not only learners. They are humans who require comprehensive support. We must address and support the whole person, not just the academic performance. Providing mental health services is crucial to helping them cope with their experiences and both thrive inside and outside of the classroom. Changing the foundation aid formula to add funds to better address these disparities is crucial. By reforming how resources are allocated, we can begin to tackle the systematic inequities that persist across New York State school districts. Ensuring equitable access to restorative justice and mental health services is a fundamental step in creating a more inclusive and supportive education environment for all our students. And I would also like to talk about the location of today's hearing. I appreciate all of the work Rockefeller Institute is doing with this hearing.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to remind folks again, please, if we could keep it to two minutes. We really don't want to disadvantage some folks and not have people be able to speak. So do I have my next two speakers? What numbers are you? Where are we? Huh? 11 through 15, please. Yeah. Yeah. Good evening. I'm so sorry. We just came from Rochester, so we're not ready for you guys, but we are ready. Okay. Here we go. So, good evening. My name is Carmen Torres. I am with the Children's Agenda. We advocate for children, much like in our schools and a lot of our children that have, are suffering from type of disparity or an emotional issues, health issues, whatever you, a child may need. We fight for that as far as policies. My job is to encourage parents to speak up and speak out. And so I'm here with our parents. So with that said, all the children in our city in Rochester are our future. They are bright, they're talented, and full of potential. But they cannot reach that potential without the necessary resources. Unfortunately, the current level of foundation aid is insufficient to meet their needs. It is disheartening to see our students struggle with outdated textbooks, Chromebooks, overcrowded classrooms, insufficient support services, and school closures because we had to close some schools down. Our teachers, who are dedicated and hardworking, are often forced to do more with less. And our students are the ones who suffer as a result. I traveled, as I said, with parents from Rochester for over an hour to attend this hearing, hoping to make our voices heard and demand the support our children so desperately need. We left our jobs, rearranged our schedules, and we made sacrifices because we believe that our presence and our pleas would be effective. This hearing did not favor the parents and students of Rochester. Thank you. Thank you. That's it? You're at time. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm going to be the translator.
Yeah. Okay, so because we're doing translation, what we're going to do is we're going to give you two minutes to speak and an additional two minutes so that you have time, you're not trying to talk over one another, if that, right? So two minutes and two minutes to translate, or however you want to split that up.
Very good.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Divat Garcia. Soy parte de Children's Agenda y represento a la comunidad bilingüe.
Hello. My name is Divat Garcia. I am here representing the Children's Agenda as one of the parents. And I am here because I need a translator in Carmen's.
Llegué de Puerto Rico buscando ayudas y mejores servicios para mi hijo después del huracán María. Pensé que las cosas serían diferentes, pero el proceso ha sido bien difícil. Al comienzo, mi hijo no tenía escuela. Tuve que, con la ayuda de una trabajadora social y abogada, contactar una abogada y finalmente entró a una escuela. Luego, con la llegada del COVID...
So I came from Puerto Rico looking for help after the hurricane Maria. I thought that things would be better for me and my children in Rochester, but it seems to me that the process was even more difficult for me to get the necessary support that I needed for my children. And I needed a social worker and so many other supports in order to get what I needed for them.
Luego, con la llegada del COVID y el encierro, todo se tornó difícil en muchos aspectos, lo que causó que él comenzara a mostrar comportamientos.
So after COVID, we noticed, I noticed that my, one of my children was having a lot of, a hard time actually with adjusting and after the COVID situation. And it took a long time to get him what he needed.
La transición de vuelta a la escuela fue muy complicada y los comportamientos comenzaron a aumentar. La escuela especializada no quiso obrigar más con él hasta el punto de expulsarlo.
I have a child who is nonverbal with autism. And in the school that he has gone to, he was kicked out because supposedly of his behaviors, yet no one ever helped him with that.
Un joven con múltiples necesidades estuvo entrando y saliendo del hospital. Ha sido un proceso difícil para nuestra familia. Las líneas de emergencia no proveen mucha ayuda y la ayuda muchas veces no llega.
Calling 911 for my child and getting the help and support in schools that were specialized in my child's need with autism did not prevail for us. He had so many needs and nobody to help him. And so they denied a lot of the services.
Los proveedores médicos solo se lamentan de no poder ayudar, más solo pueden decir que lamentablemente el sistema está roto.
They even said that the system is broken. These are the, his actual doctors that would say, "We can't help you."
Nadie ve las necesidades y la seriedad de la situación en la que nos encontramos los padres de jóvenes con necesidades especiales.
People don't notice, authorities do not care as a whole for children who have high needs of support.
Hace un año, mi hijo se encuentra en mi casa con home instruction. Los servicios son escasos o ninguno.
He ended up with a whole year's worth of services coming to our home, but nothing else, no socialization.
Aún en la comunidad no encuentro la ayuda porque la mayoría de los lugares no tienen staff o recursos.
There is no staff. There's no resources for my child. What do I do?
Dejando a la familia como la mía a su suerte.
Leaving my family to do what we can.
No le deseo a ninguna familia que pase por esto, no importando la raza o cultura.
I do not desire for anyone else to have similar situations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Miller. I'm here to represent Children's Agenda, which I am a parent. I am here to speak about more money for our district and needs of not having staff, not enough staff to be covered. We don't have a lot of social workers, counselors, you name it. We don't have all that because we don't have the support, because we don't have enough money to support them, to help our children, of mental health, anything that goes on in the school system. We need more support, monies. We need more support of having more programs for our children when it comes down to mental health and everything, and other programs that they really need, including with families. The support all over the board. I just feel like as a parent standing here, coming from Rochester, New York, for a whole hour to get here to speak, I feel like we should, I feel like, you know, somebody could have came to Rochester so y'all could hear more parents to speak on this also. I just feel like as a parent, we need to fight for, to help our children, to get what they need. And this is what I'm here to stand for. But not just me, but for all of the parents that came from Rochester and community members that came from Rochester to fight for our children. So we really need that help. And I'm asking you, pleading you, that we need more, we need to see more money to help our kids achieve in their education. Because right now, they are not, because our schools are closed, all of our schools are closing, and we don't have that support at all. And we need the money to help our families, help our teachers, help everybody in the district to get what the children need.
Thank you.
I'm asking that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Paulette O'Neill-Brown from Rochester, New York. I'd like to say thank you so much for doing this study. On April 7, 2023, my family and I suffered a house fire, total loss. We're still displaced. During this time, my children went back to school. Two of them were suspended. I had three children in the district at one time, two of which were suspended. They had an altercation. Never once was there any type of social service help in terms of counseling or a psychologist, social work. I would like to see more of that, some of the funds to go in to help children, even conflict resolution. Our children suffer from enormous amounts of conflict and emotional unrest, if I can put it that way, which they do need to have more specific emotional wellness, training courses, however it can be done. Funds could be allocated toward that. These children suffered a long-term suspension. Two of them suffered a long-term suspension, one of which did happen to make it through with the tutoring center and was able to graduate, fortunately, this past June. One of them is still struggling to this day. Failed three courses, out of place, feeling awkward, even testified in Albany that she had suicidal thoughts. And as a parent, as a mother, any mother would know it is difficult to watch your children go through this and not feel like I'm able to help her in any way. And as I send my children off to school, I'm looking for the support emotionally, mentally, as well as academically. All of those factors are very important, and I'd like to see more resources allocated toward that. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's all the registered speakers we have for this evening. We will hold the mics open for about a half an hour just to make sure that there's nobody else that wants to speak. I encourage you again, if you don't feel like you had anything else that you wanted to say, to please provide written testimony through the Rockefeller Institute's website. We appreciate your time and attendance here tonight, and we appreciate folks traveling to do this. Thank you. Hello, ladies. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. We're going to let you come up one by one, just so you know, because you weren't here to hear my spiel. Each speaker has two minutes. There's a clock on the podium, and I have one right here. When you get halfway to the halfway point, it's going to change color. And then at two minutes, I'm going to apologize upfront, but I'm going to say thank you and stop you. Okay? There you go. And if you could tell us who you are and where you're from, that'd be great. You're up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nidia Benitez and I'm a very interested, invested parent with the Children's Agenda, based in Rochester, New York. I have three children go through the public education system, and with one daughter entering the ninth grade and a grandson who is entering the first grade in Rochester. And I drove here with other parents to discuss the importance of updating the foundation aid formula to reflect the true cost of education. First and foremost, I want to push the recommendation of updating the state-funded universal pre-kindergarten allocations by linking them to the K-12 Foundation Aid per pupil amount for all preschool students, regardless of the district's ability to enroll more students. Studies have shown that the benefits of pre-kindergarten education can last into adulthood with a return investment of up to $17 for every $1 spent. However, these benefits are at risk due to the current state-level preschool funding structure, particularly for low-income districts and those with established UPK programs that have nearly universal enrollment. When a school district joins the state-funded UPK program, the per-pupil amount is set at either half the district's K-12 Foundation Aid amount or $5,400, whichever is larger. This amount can be adjusted based on the student's needs and community wealth. The initial number of students is also set, determining the district's maximum allocation. However, the per-pupil rate for the original target number of students is frozen and at the amount from the year the district joined the program. While potential UPK funding can increase annually with the foundation aid formula, districts can only access higher rates when they add more students in classrooms, and only for those new students. For growing UPK programs, the average per-pupil rate may slightly increase each year as they expand partially, accounting for inflation and rising costs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Stephanie Vargas. I'm a parent to a seven-year-old currently enrolled in public school in Rochester, New York. I drove over an hour with other parents to be able to testify and hope to be a voice for parents who did not have the resources to get here, either due to the fact that they do not have a car, do not have access to childcare, or otherwise do not work the traditional nine-to-five hours. In order to garner sufficient input in the future, having additional in-person hearings in high-needs districts like Rochester, Syracuse, Yonkers, Utica, Brentwood, East Ramapo, Albany, and many, many more will ensure broader participation, as this room looks incredibly empty. And if it was held in a high-needs district, I imagine it would be a lot more packed in here. Ultimately, I am here because I have witnessed firsthand the vital role the public education plays in shaping the future of our children. Public education is the cornerstone of our community. It provides every child, regardless of their background, with the opportunity to succeed. The current foundation aid formula is flawed in many ways, given the current formula is built in a way that does not calculate the true cost of education as it stands today. As some of our parents mentioned before, indexing the pre-K funding to match that of K through 12 is extremely important. Another reason why the foundation aid can't calculate the true cost of education is due to using outdated data, such as census data from 2000. Making sure that the formula is using the most current, up-to-date status or census data will ensure that districts are no longer short-changed and that New York State no longer violates students' constitutional right to a fair and basic education, regardless of the cost, because education is expensive and it continues to rise. That is not the fault of the parents. The state has an obligation to continue funding foundation aid and making sure it is reflective of the true cost of care and education.
Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Tamara Wall, here with the Children's Agenda, and I have a seven-year-old child enrolled in public school in West Orange, New York. Today, I want to address a pressing issue affecting our schools and, most importantly, our students. The foundation aid formula in New York State, while designed with good intentions, is currently failing many school districts. This formula, which allocates funding based on a set of predetermined criteria, does not adequately reflect the evolving economic realities and diverse needs of our communities. While intended to support equitable education for all students, the current formula falls short of addressing the realities of our time, leading to significant inequities and disparities across our school districts. Many districts in New York State are struggling due to outdated metrics that do not account for current poverty levels or the actual cost of education. The root of this lies in funding formula that no longer reflects anything that we're experiencing, especially the true cost. The current model does not adequately account for the increased expenses associated with modern educational needs or the demographic shifts that have led to decreased enrollment in many districts. This results in a widening gap between what schools need and what they actually receive, perpetuating a cycle of underfunding and underperformance. It is clear that we need an updated foundation aid model, one that considers the unique challenges faced by districts with declining enrollment and higher cost of education. faced by districts with declining enrollment and higher costs of education. This model must be equitable, ensuring that all schools, especially those in rural and low-income areas, receive the necessary resources to provide a quality education. The result is a widening disparity in educational resources. Schools in low-income areas where the need is greatest often receive insufficient support, leading to overcrowded classrooms, outdated materials, and a lack of essential programs. Meanwhile, more affluent districts may continue to receive funding that does not accurately reflect their true needs or challenges. Reassessing and revising the foundation aid formula is not just an administrative task, it's a moral imperative. We must ensure that funding is allocated based on current poverty metrics and the real cost of delivering quality education. This adjustment will enable all students, regardless of their background or the district they're in, to have access to the resources and opportunities that they deserve. By aligning the foundation aid formula with contemporary needs, we can ensure that every child has the chance to succeed, fostering a fair and just education system for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's it. Like you said, if we're going to hold the mics open for another 15 or 20 minutes, in case anybody else shows up that wants to speak. But again, we thank you very much for being here and for traveling to be here. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say again, if you, a lot of you are reading your testimony, please use the opportunity, go to the website, that's up there, rockins.org/FA. Just upload what you've written, and we will read it all.